Good evening, Mayor and Council. The broadcast has started.
Okay, welcome everybody to our April 28th, 2020 City Council meeting. So I'd like to open the meeting and let's start with the roll call. Turn it over to you, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor John Capochea.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Erzamende.
Present.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember John Heribedian.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum and may conduct city business.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, Erzamende is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration.
Great. I know this is awkward, but those of us that can't stand, if you can stand, that would be great. We have a flag on the slideshow and I'll go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, and thank you for those that indulged in standing up. Again, I know it's Zoom, we're looking at different parts of your body, but I think it's appropriate thing to do, so thank you. For words of inspiration today, I just want to do a special thanks to those that are on the front line and our essential workers. For those in the audience and those that are on the meeting right now, I think all of us have seen the sign in Kirsten Court. Thank you, I think Councilmember Heribedian for that idea. And the sign simply just says, just a thank you to the city staff, firefighters, our first responders, and all those medical professionals, whether they live in town or elsewhere. We know at this challenging time, those are the people that are, again, are in the front line and possibly risking their lives to save others. So thank you very much. I know for me personally, I have a lot of family members in the medical field, as you can imagine, and Filipino, a lot of nurses out there, and so a special heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And, okay, now to move on, approval of the meeting agenda? Does anybody have any comments on the meeting agenda or would like to change anything?
No, move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, if you'll take the role.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we did the role at the beginning.
Oh, I mean, just, we're, yeah, but we need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay, new process. Okay. I guess we're having the vote, right? Okay, Mayor John Capochea?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Erzamende?
Yes.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Heribedian?
Yes.
So the motion to approve the agenda as presented was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, now for Mayor and City Council reports. Does anybody have a report to make?
I don't. Mayor, I have a brief report. Just wanted to tell the public that's watching and that when you're sheltering at home, you're quite limited as to what you can do in terms of actually getting out and seeing people. I want everyone to understand this, at least I speak for myself and I'm sure I speak for everyone else on the council. I've been very, very careful to read every single email I've received with reference to the monastery issue. I've responded to every email I've received, but I have not responded to any of the emails that were labeled "public comment." I've read them all, every single one, but I thought it was inappropriate to respond because typically we do not respond to public comments when they're brought to us in the form of a city council meeting. So I just wanted to be clear on that, that we are all doing our due diligence and I can say that I've read everything that's come across my email, in my email box. I've read them closely and carefully and took them all very seriously. I'd also like the public to know that the council's been meeting twice a week for special COVID-19 meetings with the city manager, and I just want the public to know that we are all getting up-to-date information about the COVID-19 situation and the policies and the laws and the changing environment. And it's been very useful, at least I can speak for myself, it's been very useful. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Erzamende?
I just wanted to give a plug again for Sierra Madre Thrives and Quarantine Canteen. It's occurring again this Wednesday. I'm not sure where we are with orders, but it is Nano Cafe that's being featured this week. And for those of you that are not aware as to what Quarantine Canteen is, it's available for those that are in need, if we have someone that just needs a dinner. But it's also really supporting our local businesses and it contributes to whichever business is featured that week and also some shared costs. So thanks again to the Comers who took a lead on Sierra Madre Thrives, and there's other businesses aside from restaurants that you can support, so please visit the site when you can.
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to second that. It's really impressive, the volunteer opportunity. You know, cases like Sierra Madre Thrives, they have more volunteers than they actually have a need for them. So that's really refreshing that really virtually anybody who needs a hand with anything in this crisis can get some help just by working through that volunteer organization. It's very, very impressive. There's another young lady named Megan Maluli also that has an organization called Helping Hand, I think, and she's doing some of the same kinds of things. She hears of somebody who has a need and she will, you know, find a donor that will help them. So, I mean, boy, if you've got issues and you need help, Sierra Madre is certainly a great place to be because of all the resources that are available to help you. So that's just very Sierra Madre in how these people have stepped up to do this thing. So I would just like to give them my thanks as well. Okay. Okay, at this time, we're going to open it up for public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. And we'll wait a minute for people to call in and for, if you have email that you want to call in, our staff will call you back. And again, this is just for items that are not on the agenda. We're going to announce this on every new agenda item, that when we get to that point, that would be the time for you to call in while we are hearing the staff report. But again, this is just open for anybody with comments not on the agenda. And if you have any comments on the consent calendar, please call in at this time. It's just the warrants that we approved. There's really nothing else on the consent calendar. So I'm just not going to go through this row when we get to that. So, okay, shall we just wait just a minute and see if anybody wishes to speak?
Mayor Capochea, this is Laura Aguilar, Assistant City Clerk. I would just want to advise you and the city council members that the city did receive 21 emails for items not on the agenda. Those emails were forwarded to the city council for review previously, and they will be added to the public record.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So meantime, has anybody requested to actually speak?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a couple of people lined up to provide comments for items not on the agenda, and I will now let them in.
For items not on the agenda?
Correct. The discussion item that you just opened, for items not on the agenda, we do have some callers.
Okay, great.
Thank you caller for calling in. Please provide your name and city. You have up to three minutes to provide your public comment. Please proceed.
Thank you for taking my call. My name is John Hugh Banks, and I am asking you to vote yes on the MOU for the Dolorosa property. Please keep our Sierra Madre beautiful for the next generations to come.
Mr. Hugh Banks.
Your overall plan of the Dolorosa community would certainly be right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Again, this is for items that are not on the agenda. We will be discussing the MOU on a separate item. So if the next person is calling to talk about.
Thank you.
Please call back at that time that we put it on that we're about to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling the city of Sierra Madre. Please provide your name and city. You have up to three minutes to provide your comment. You may proceed.
My name is John Clark. I live in Sierra Madre. John Clark. Hello?
Yes, we're listening. And Mr. Clark, if you have your TV on the background, please mute it so that you don't get the feedback.
Thank you very much for telling me that. And as I'm looking at the TV now, I'm seeing that I'm now in the public comment for items not on the agenda, so I am in the wrong place.
Okay.
I want to be in the queue for the public comment on the monastery project. So I apologize for that.
Okay.
Can you put me in the right place?
Once the mayor opens up discussion for the MOU, you will have to call back.
I will, I will do that when I see the TV, when he starts that discussion.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, great. Just, I'll just say one thing about this, is I see that I cannot be speaking. So, yeah, so that was appropriate, Tevin, that you talked to them because I can't, because I'm delayed. So they're not hearing me when I say something. So I just have to sit here quietly, even if they're in the wrong place like that. So you've got to step in and just correct it if they're in the wrong place, okay? All right.
I will do that.
Those are the only two for items not on the agenda. So with that.
We have three more, we have three more callers that have called in for items not on the agenda. Well.
Okay, so when they start talking, if they start talking about the MOU, please cut them off and ask them to come back, because I can't do it because I'm delayed.
Understood. I will do that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you caller. Please provide your name and city. You have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching, please go ahead and mute the TV or your audio source so that there is no feedback. You are talking about items not on the agenda. You may proceed.
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Peters, and I live in Sierra Madre. I just wanted to ask about the Alverno Heights Academy lower campus. I believe portable classrooms are being put on campus in the next few weeks or months. And that children are going to be admitted for September for TK through eighth. And I was wondering how this is being permitted when the school is not, it wasn't on the master plan. I know temporary, a temporary grant was given that have safety issues been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more caller for items not on the agenda. Thank you for calling. Please provide your name and city. You have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching, please mute your TV or your feed to avoid feedback. You are discussing items not on the agenda. You may proceed.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lucretia Agundez, and I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU that is being discussed tonight and considered.
Hello.
I asked.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Right now, we are doing items that are not on the agenda. In a few moments later on in the meeting, the mayor will open up the line for comments on that specific item. You may call back at that time to provide your comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, there are no longer any callers for items not on the agenda.
Oops. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, for those that commented, thank you very much. I mean, we're still learning how to work this process optimally. But I was, I was pretty happy with how that worked out right there. So the comments about Alverno, Mr. City Manager, can you please comment on that? That has not been before us on the council here. So can you tell us what you know about the master plan and the appropriateness of the K through eight?
That's correct, Mayor. The master plan for Alverno High School allows for up to 400 students. I forget the total amount of parking and the traffic circulation that's allowed under the master plan. The proposed use at a transitional kindergarten through eighth grade does not exceed any of the thresholds that are allowed under the master plan. Before Alverno can proceed, they are required to do a number of studies, including traffic impact study, environmental impact study. And if they pass those, they'll receive temporary approval to operate the facility. But permanent approval has to be completed by the planning commission, and they have up to two years to amend their master plan appropriately and receive approval from the planning commission.
Okay, so they're going to proceed ahead. They've announced their plan to proceed ahead. And so they, I guess they're just confident that they're going to receive the temporary approval.
Yes, Mayor, to our knowledge, they haven't completed any of the studies yet, and the pre-application meeting, as we call it, is actually set for next week. So they've made an announcement, but temporary approval will only be granted upon successful completion of the studies that don't show any negative impacts to the community that can't be mitigated.
Okay, thank you very much. It's very helpful. Okay, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, we're going to talk about the memorandum of understanding.
Before we go there, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I apologize. This is Sue Spears, the city clerk. We need to do the approval of the minutes and then the consent item.
Did I miss that? Yes, we did. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay, does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, who was first there? Was it Mayor Pro Tem?
I believe it was Mayor Pro Tem and Erzamende.
Okay, okay, Madam City Clerk, if you can call for the vote.
Mayor John Capochea?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Erzamende?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Heribedian?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 14th, 2020 as presented was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, at this time, we're going to talk about the MOU between the Passionists and Sierra Madre.
We have the consent item still, the consent item.
Consent item. We did not vote on that, did we? Okay. All right, let's, let's call for the vote. We need a motion to approve in a second for the consent item.
Miss, can I confirm the consent item?
I'll second.
Okay. To call the vote, Mayor John Capochea?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Erzamende?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Heribedian?
Yes.
The motion to approve consent item 1A as presented was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you.
Third time's the charm here. We're going to get to the discussion about the memorandum of understanding. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our city manager. So, Mr. City Manager, could you please take it, take it away?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're going to have a PowerPoint presentation first, and then we'll open it up for council questions and comments. And for anyone who'd like to make, call in and make public comment on this item only now would be the time to call in, and we'll have Christian get you in a queue. So the first thing I'd like to say is, look, look what happens to a PowerPoint presentation when legal gets a hold of it. That is a very long title. It's a long way of saying we want to give a presentation on it, MOU between the city and the property owner, which is the monastery. So we want to do a little recap of where we were at at our last meeting on March 10th. And where we started that meeting at was recapping the conversations that I've had with people in the community. And it's really struck me, the emotional response that people have to that property, and how people have, over time, treated it like an asset of Sierra Madre or a public park, if you look at the first comment. And I realized that I was providing a legal response to what is essentially an emotional issue. So I wanted to acknowledge again, just like I did at the March 10th meeting, I wanted to acknowledge upfront, I understand the connection people have to this property. And though we're going to go through legal issues and entitlement rights, I don't want it lost that people do feel a connection to the property that they've enjoyed since they moved here, in some cases, since before they moved here. So with that, I'd like to start the meeting. One of the things I wanted to acknowledge is, at the March 10th meeting, we had a total of 21 comments. And some of the items we heard is that when we're on Zoom meetings, it's hard to participate. You can't be there physically. But if you look, this, this was at five o'clock today for the current meeting, we've received 161 public comments now. It's been, it's been updated. It looks like it's not updated on this slide. So people have taken the time to write out and comment how they feel. You see the difference between public comment and other comment. And the reason for that is, we started getting comments before this was even posted as an agenda item. But we didn't want people to feel like their voices weren't heard, even though they had commented before the item was posted. So we include that here in the tally as other comments. So the most recent one is 130 comments in support and 31, remains 31 comments in opposition. So that has been updated since I put this presentation together. So going into an FAQ, one of the common questions we get is, does the MOU exempt the developer from any requirements? And the answer is no. This doesn't provide any exemption from any study or hearing, any entitlement, any part of the process that they would have to go through. They still have to go through that in the MOU. They aren't exempted. It does require them to do things that are in addition to what is in local or state law. The second question we get a lot is, does the MOU bind the city to accepting a housing development that the public doesn't support? The answer to that is no. This MOU guides the proceedings only. It guides the calendar only. It does not rezone the property. It does not give any property rights or entitlements to the property owner. What it does is it allows them, in a constructive and meaningful way, to present their ideas to the public, and then the public gets to give feedback and comment. And again, same as with the first question, it allows for more public comment than what's required currently under local and state law. So we covered that a little bit. Does the MOU limit public participation? Again, the answer is no. The MOU requires additional town halls. We're currently planning to hold the first two with the first one in late June. One of the portions of the contract says timelines can be adjusted because of the current pandemic response. So it's very important that we hold these meetings at a time and place where people can be present and not have them electronically. So part of the MOU accounts for the conditions that we're currently in. Does the MOU exempt the applicant from any requirements under CEQA? And again, the answer to that is no. It provides a timeline and mechanism for how these studies take place, but they still have to go through the process to determine traffic, environmental impact, the whole nine yards. So again, you'll notice the theme is they're not being exempted from any requirements. Does the MOU limit the density of the proposed development? The answer to that is yes. One of the reasons the city is interested in entering into an MOU is it does substantially limit the amount of units that can be built on the property. So we have a slide later that will walk through that, but upfront, yes, the density would be limited. Does the MOU include applicant concessions to the city? So I'm not going to read these verbatim, but again, the answer is yes. The MOU memorializes the negotiations that took place to date. And the MOU shows that the property owner would provide a three-and-a-half acre park, donate 45 acres of property up on the hillside. It would be a net zero development and so on and so forth. So again, the MOU memorializes the negotiations that have taken place. So if the city does not agree to the MOU, can the property owner submit a plan for development? And would the city be required to process that plan? The answer is two-part question. They're both yes. The property has an entitlement to develop as institutional. Absent the MOU being considered, a plan for development could be put in today, and the city would be obligated to process it. I've said it frequently, but the city has a legal obligation to allow for lawful development, and the current entitlement on the property is institutional. Last question, I just got ahead of myself. Yes, the city has a legal obligation to allow it to go forward. So the two parts of the MOU that I use as excerpts here to show people is that the MOU grants. is that the MOU grants the applicant procedural rights only, doesn't grant any planning or land use entitlements. That's important. A lot of the emails we got said, don't rezone the property, don't amend the general plan. This MOU, we haven't had time to look into it. The MOU doesn't do either of those things. Again, it lays out a calendar and a mechanism for the studies and the town halls to take place. The other question we get is, well, once you've signed the MOU, then it's a done deal and it has to go forward. The MOU very clearly says that failure to approve the project by the city council is not a breach of the MOU. There can be approved. It can be denied. They can enter into no subsequent development agreement. This is just the MOU. The development agreement would be next. None of those are violations of the MOU. When we talk about when the public can interact, you're seeing tonight, April twenty-eighth, the city council public hearing on the adoption of the MOU. And we noted that we've already had a hundred and sixty-one people comment on this. Previous meeting, we had twenty-one. Moving forward, there's at least a minimum of seven additional chances for the community to weigh in and talk about their thoughts on the proposed project. And that gives the developer and the property owner the ability to respond to the input and feedback that they receive. So showing the proposed configuration, the Park to the South is the dominant feature on this. It's a little hard to see, but if you look on the west, there's the shaded area in black and orange that represents a twenty-foot buffer. And what you're seeing is that none of the proposed home areas will be built up against a current home in Sierra Madre. So, you'll notice there's not a number of homes there. This isn't a development map or plot map. It's just to show where the homes would go, what would be a sloped and manicured area where the park would be and where the buffer would be. So going over the property history real quick, we did this last time, too. Prior to nineteen ninety-seven, this was residential, single-family. In nineteen ninety-seven, the city appropriately created an institutional zoning, and it pulled all sorts of properties into it, Modern De La Rosa being one of them, but also the cemetery, some schools, and items like that. And in nineteen ninety-seven, the reason that we created the institutional zone is, we said, well, we acknowledge that large institutional properties are unique in urban areas, and we need to be very careful how we allow them for future conversion, how they're allowed to develop, essentially saying, you know, institutional use might not be the best use of a property that size in a city that's developed like we have. And our preferred uses at that time were public recreational facilities and low-density residential, subject to, you know, appropriate code at the time. So then, when we get into two thousand and sixteen, we amend the language to say, the institutional zone is established, but it's no longer to consider low-density residential. That use was taken out of the reason that the zoning was amended. So if you look at it today, pre, or post-two thousand and sixteen, it's all zoned, i-institutional, and it's all abutting or adjacent to a single-family residential or a park on the east. So, we can slide forward, James. So if you look at the allowed uses in institutional, when you have something that's twenty acres, these are the appropriate uses: hospital, communal residential, assisted living, multi-use field, or school. And what you start to realize, when you see the amount of economic activity it would take to get a return on investment if someone was to buy twenty acres as institutional, you realize that these uses are potentially very damaging or harmful to the neighborhood. And that doesn't include the idea that the owners could simply subdivide portions of the property and then just sell them off to developers who may have their own ideas. And then we're dealing with multiple property owners as opposed to one. So when we look at the development standards by zoning, when we talk about the density, if you look at a standard R1, which is low-density residential, which was removed, that allows for a hundred and sixteen dwelling units. As you get more dense, you move into R3, same-sized property, you could move to two hundred and sixty units. R3H, which is, it's the low-income housing bonus, you could go up to four hundred dwelling units. And this is where we really start to understand what could happen up there. KSPO stands for the Kensington Specific Plan. The Kensington is a one-point-eight acre property that abuts commercial and also residential. And what they were able to negotiate, because in institutional, if you move forward one more, James, in institutional, we have no defined limits on dwelling units or gross floor area or lot coverage. It's all negotiable. And what we say is that negotiations often end where they begin, meaning if you end at a not-optimal starting, or, yeah, you start at a non-optimal point, that's likely where you're going to end. So if you look at what Kensington was able to negotiate, and I think Kensington's a great development, by the way, but they were able to negotiate lot coverage in excess of what was in the code. They were able to negotiate their setbacks from twenty-five feet down to zero feet. They have greater density than would typically be allowed in that area. So if we move forward, and then we take away the idea of high-density residential, and we just look at what the MOU does when compared to these, is the MOU, click one more time, James. The MOU shows a total density of forty-two units, as opposed to a hundred and sixteen units, significantly less than what would be allowed in the lowest-density residential. And then you see that we put gross-floor area lot coverage setbacks as negotiable. Again, I've been very transparent that I will trade larger homes that are fewer in number, as opposed to having smaller homes that are larger in number. So, when we went into looking at how do we limit the impacts to the community to the greatest extent possible, the only way to do that is to limit the density. So that was the goal. That's what we went in trying to do. So when we look at residential versus institutional development, again, we've talked about all of this, what it reduces allowable density dramatically. We get a lot of calls that say, well, couldn't, isn't it possible that an institutional development would be less dense? It's possible. I'd say it's unlikely, and it's not probable. And also, how much are we willing, as a city, to risk that we're going to get a low-density institutional development when there is the ability on the market to develop a very dense, very productive property? So, we believe it'll lessen impact and disruption to the neighborhood. We believe it is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Again, everything there is low-density residential or parkland. And as I stated before, it provides a much better starting point for negotiation. So, in summary, the monastery has a legal right to develop its properties institutional today. They can submit their application today, and we would be obligated to process it. And there would be very little public input, because again, they have that entitlement today. City has a legal obligation to lawful development, and what that means is, the discussion is not whether there will or will not be development. This is when there will be development. And the question before the council and the community, as we move forward, is how will it be developed? What is the most appropriate development for our community? So again, reminding people what the property map looks like. The yellow is what is being proposed as a development, and the green is the park. The blue is Bailey Canyon Park, and then up to the north, running off the map, is the forty-five acres of hillside that would also be donated as part of this MOU if approved. Staff is recommending city council adopt the resolution and approve the MOU. And after tonight, all of the information from this meeting, and as we go forward, will be posted directly at cityofsierraamadre.com/monastery, or you can get there also by going through the transparency portal, which it looks like people have started to do. So with that, Mayor, we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, before we open it up for questions, just a reminder to the public is that you may want to dial in now if you haven't already, and we'll get you ready to come onto queue so that you can make comments. So, what questions do we have?
I have no questions, Mayor.
I have no questions at this time.
No questions either.
Okay, I do have one question. How does the member of the public view all these comments that we received? Are those going to be put up on the transparency portal?
Mayor, we can post them on the transparency portal if you would wish. Although they'll be recorded in the record, is the name only. If you'd like us to post them online, we can do that. We would simply block out the email address, but we would leave the name in the comment.
Yes, okay, because it is a public record. Again, I just think it's important to do that, just because of the amount of correspondence that we have. I just, and I, you know, I just, I know there will be accusations that we're making up these numbers. So I think it'd be really good to just put them out there and just let people view them, and people could come to their own judgments about what they see and what the comments are. And just, let's just be open about it and proceed ahead.
Happy to, Mayor.
That's my suggestion. Okay. Other than that, I certainly don't have any questions, because I've been living and breathing this issue for the last three weeks, and I'm frankly exhausted. So, let's open it up for public comment at this point, and hear what folks have to say about, and about the MOU. And again, I would just ask people that are commenting, please, don't say, I don't want the development there. I mean, I don't either. If you read my article last week about the development, we'd all, I think, prefer to just leave everything the way it is forever and ever. That is not an option, and the council, I can speak for my peers, we're not going to be considering that as a viable option. So just out of respect for the council and for the other people that have something to say, let's talk about the MOU itself. That's what's before us today, okay? So with that, let's open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have about twenty people waiting to provide the comments, so I'll start letting them in one by one. Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching the meeting live, please mute your TV or feed to avoid feedback. You may proceed.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for taking my call. My name is Trevor Cole. I just want to keep this switch quick. I did submit an email in favor of the city entering into the memorandum, and I'm just following up with a phone call and asked if you consider it again tonight. I asked that you vote in favor of the memorandum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I will not, I appreciate all the comments. I'm not going to even say thank you afterwards, because there's a delay. So Tevin, you just jump in and hang up the call, and let's move to the next. And it might seem a little bit awkward, but otherwise, we have to wait for the delay before you hear my comments, and I'm not sure it's necessary to do that. So, Tevin, you're in control. Keep it moving, okay? Thank you.
Understood. Good evening, caller. We're currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching the meeting live, please mute your TV or feed to avoid feedback. You may proceed. Caller, you may proceed.
My name is John Loftus, calling from Pasadena, and I'd sent an email in favor of the MOU, and I'm just encouraging the city council to vote in approval.
Thank you so much. Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence, and you will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, my name is Marta Salgado-Ninho. I live in Pasadena. I work at Matter de La Rosa, and I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU that is being considered tonight. I ask that you vote in favor of the MOU. Thank you very much.
Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment. Caller? Good evening, caller. We're currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hi. It's Lynn Coleman. I'm a resident of Sierra Madre. The MOU states that the city believes that the single-family residential units may be the most compatible use of the monastery property. I'm curious as to when council discussed this, and when did it happen? I would like to request if you could post a list of the council meetings and the minutes on your website regarding discussions about the monastery and the approved actions, so that I can quickly catch up and get up to speed. Given the detail in the MOU and the PowerPoint given in both the March meeting and the meeting today, it appears that discussions with the monastery have been going on for a while, and I don't recall being aware of them or having opportunities for public hearing and comment. I would have appreciated details of the pros and cons of the discussion on residential versus institutional use, the proposed plan for the city to buy the property, other information, such as how much of Bailey Canyon Park will be used to widen the road, and will the trees be removed, an explanation of how the math on the net-zero water works, and how the low-flush toilets offset large multi-bathroom homes with possibly swimming pools and landscaping, as well as a great deal more, things that obviously affected your decision-making and I'm not aware of. I would like to see this opened up going forward with a little bit more transparency and discussions. I'd like to hear from my Sierra Madre neighbors as well. We're very fortunate that we have a great number of smart, thoughtful residents who, when given the opportunity, provide much-needed insights into community issues, and I missed hearing from them on this important development. Thank you very much.
Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Lisa Thayer, and all I have to say is, if you must approve the MOU, then go ahead and do so, but I would really appreciate some transparency going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence, and you will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching this meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Lucretia Agundis, and I live in Pasadena. I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU that is being considered tonight. I ask that you vote in favor of the MOU, and I want to urge you to please allow them to continue the development project. Thank you very much.
Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Matter de La Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for taking my call. My name is John Clark, and I live in Sierra Madre. I also thank you for taking on such a difficult assignment. Any of the, in the past, any of these construction projects, development projects, have been a challenge for all of us. So, thank you very much for your hard work. I have two questions that I would like answered at some time and when appropriate. And the first concerns the street work that needs to be done between Lima and the fence at the monastery. And here's my thought quickly. And here's my, my thought quickly. That's a very narrow area. I assume the only way that that could, that a decent road could be put through would be to take some of the property off of Bailey Canyon Parking. So if you, as you go about your work, if you let that know, let us know how much of that park and park, parking we lose. The second concerns the issue of the, I'll call it just water. But there is a section in the, in the MOU that talks about, about zero-based water calculations or something like that. But in, in, in part of that phrase, it talks about setting up a fund. At some point in time, can you let us know who sets that fund up? How it, how big is it? How is it replenished? And how is it audited? It's not, that's not a concept that I'm familiar with. That concludes my questions, and I thank you for taking my call.
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. You may proceed with your comment.
They came online right now.
Caller, would you like to provide a comment?
Yes, my name is Terry Minocchio, and I live in Sierra Madre. And I sent an email in support of the, of the monastery and the MOU. And I'm just calling to reaffirm my support for the MOU. Thank you.
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. You may proceed.
Hi, this is Ed Bruin, and I'm with the board, Matter de la Rosa Board. I'm the chair. And I live with my family in the city of Altadena, and we use services in Sierra Madre frequently. Number one, I just want to point out, I think, the mayor, the city council, the city manager are doing a phenomenal job in the middle of a pandemic, running a meeting on Zoom as if, you know, they're running CNN. So hats off to the entire team for doing such a, a nice job in that regard. Second, I wrote a letter to the mayor and to the city council in support of the MOU. I think it's the, the right decision. And when you sit back objectively and look at what the city has negotiated, from a city's perspective, it's, it's awfully attractive. So I just want to thank you for considering the MOU tonight thoughtfully and for all the hard work that's gone in to that, that effort to date. And then also thank you for everything you're doing in the midst of this pandemic for the vulnerable and the less fortunate in this community. It's truly amazing, so thank you.
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. You may proceed with your comment.
My name is Maury Minocchio. I live in Sierra Madre. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to ask that you vote in favor of the MOU. And thank you to the city manager for the informational presentation today. Thank you. Name?
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed. Caller, you may proceed. Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment. Hello, caller. Would you like to proceed with your comment?
Hello?
Yes, you have three minutes to proceed with your comment.
Thank you. Mayor John Capocha and council, this is Pat Alcorn from Sierra Madre. And I am here to give a statement of the, from the Preserve Sierra Madre group. I am the chair of the, of the steering committee. Our statement is that Preserve Sierra Madre will not oppose the city council executing the MOU should they decide in their best judgment to do so at this meeting. We do, however, request the timeline for the first public workshop on June 30th be rescheduled for a later date in order to assure the community as a whole may participate. And thank you very much. Bye.
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV so that, so to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment. Hello, caller. You may proceed with your comment.
Yes?
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jean Warlick. I live in Altadena. And I've been on staff in Matter de la Rosa for almost sixteen years. I would like to say that I recognize that this is an emotional issue for everyone involved, which requires change, which oftentimes is very difficult but inevitable. I did submit an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU that is being considered. And I ask that you vote in favor of the MOU. I do want to end by saying thank you for all of the time that you have put into this issue, for thinking it through for the benefit of the city, its citizens, and the passionists of Holy Cross Province. Thank you.
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Dave Benas. I'm a resident of Sierra Madre. I spoke in front of you last month regarding the MOU, and I also sent an email. I reiterate my point that I prefer for us locally to be, have a voice in development of that project. I don't want to fight with the state for losing battle, and they may get a voice in what we do with that development. So I ask you to support the MOU. Thank you very much for what you're doing. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. You may proceed with your comment. Caller, you may proceed with your comment.
My name is Sean Dennison. I'm a resident of Sierra Madre. I appreciate the mayor taking time this week to speak to me in person and direct some concerns that many people in Sierra Madre, in our community, are concerned with. I just have a brief comment. While I think we understand a little bit more, at least regarding Matter de la Rosa, what the plan is going forward, we ask that there be express transparency at every stage, so that everyone in the city can understand exactly what's happening. We respect that you are here to represent us, and we expect you will do that with the best interest of our city in mind. I think we do also understand now that this is not an ironclad agreement between you and Matter de la Rosa. And we look for your input throughout this process to make sure you are protecting the character of our city. The only other thing, the only other comment I will give is, while I respect everyone's right to make their comments, I do find it a little odd that we're taking comments from people who don't have a vested interest in the community and are not residents of Sierra Madre. I also find it disturbing that recordings of people's pro-project comments are being played. That's clearly not transparent, and it's a little dishonest. So let's try to keep this to actual live callers and not recordings of folks. That's the best thing to do. We want an honest, open discussion with live people. And I know that once we're all together again and we can see each other in person, there won't be any question about those kind of tactics. Thank you for listening.
Can I interrupt here?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I don't understand the comment about recordings. I mean, I just, what is that? I mean, people are calling in here. So if you are doing a recording, I just would appreciate that you wouldn't, but I certainly didn't have that impression. Okay, let's go on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Jay. I, good evening, everybody. I'm a residential Sierra Madre. I submit my email to city council regarding the idea of building the senior villager instead of residential building. And please read my email carefully. That way, we'll benefit for everybody, both developer and seller and the Sierra Madre resident. So I thank you, city councilors, for the hard working, and I do appreciate everybody participating. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you're currently watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Mike Cunningham, and I live in Sierra Madre. I am the retreat center director at Matter de la Rosa. At Matter de la Rosa, we try very much to live, live up to the bumper sticker, "All are welcome." And our facility, at least under normal circumstances, welcomes over eleven and a half thousand people per year. While the ministry here is vibrant and self-sustaining, the other ministries in our province are not so fortunate. So we need resources to minister in Haiti, in inner-city schools in our province, in neighborhoods in the US, and a, and a lot more. Some of the proceeds from the sale will keep these other important but unseen ministries alive. And we all know, you know, now with the pandemic more than ever, that we have to take care of each other. So this project for us is doing such a thing, not just for the priests and the brothers, but all involved in the ministry. So I ask that you vote in favor of the MOU. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. What's the password? Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Yeah, hello, Mayor Capocha and city council members. Matt Bryant, Edgeview Drive in Sierra Madre. I'm a neighbor of the monastery. I'm also on the steering committee of Preserve Sierra Madre. And so I wear kind of two hats. As a Preserve Sierra Madre steering committee member, we decide to go along with the council signing the MOU if the city council, in its good judgment, feels that it shouldn't be delayed. As we know, that MOU starts the process for public input. And more, most importantly, and this is the reason why we supported signing the MOU, it does not obligate the city to approve a bad project. And just to be clear, Preserve Sierra Madre is not for this housing project. We are not against this housing project. And I hope there's nobody else here that's already talking about approving this housing project, because we don't know the details yet to make that determination. But we'll keep a healthy, open mind about it. And, and if it's a good project, we will support it. And so while we are okay with signing the MOU, we do have reservations with the attachment D to the MOU, which gives the timelines for when the public input will occur. And the concern is that even though you guys have provided this process for us to call in, it's still a little bit difficult not to be able to do it in person. And I believe the, the MOU itself says there can be flexibility in those timeframes based on this pandemic. And it's not just about the ease of being able to call in. I think it's also the fact that I think a lot of people just aren't paying attention right now when you have a pandemic going on and you have people concerned about, you know, their very survival as well as their financial circumstances. And so on a personal note, though, I want to just add that I hope that the city council will not be so afraid of an institutional development that they will approve, that you guys will approve, a bad residential development. We have had quite a few emails come into Preserve Sierra Madre that, you know, people have explored the institutional option. And so, you know, my personal feeling is that a good institutional development would be better than a bad residential development. But obviously, with this MOU, we're going to start the process down the road with the residential development. And if Mater de la Rosa and their developer can foot forth a good project that's acceptable to the wider Sierra Madre community, as well as to the immediate neighbors, this thing can go forward, and we'll all support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
He's the chief bad guy.
Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello there, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Pat Wickham. I live in Sierra Madre. Last week, I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU agreement that is being discussed tonight. I asked you to vote in favor of the MOU. Thank you very much, and great haircut, Gabe. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are currently watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello, this is Charles Mason, and I live in Pasadena. And I've owned property in Sierra Madre for over forty years. And I submitted an email in favor of the MOU. And I, I wish that you would vote positive on it. And thank you for the city fathers for a job well done. We visit Sierra Madre many, many times. Just last week, we had a takeout dinner from there. So God bless the city. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Father Bruno de Souza, and I am the local superior of the Passionist community here in, here at Matter de la Rosa. and I am the local superior of the Passionist community here in Madre de la Rosa. First of all, I want to thank mayor and council members for devoting your time and energy into this process, and I really appreciate you taking this time and agenda, this thing on the agenda. I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU that has been considered tonight, and I asked the council to vote in favor of the MOU. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello, my name is Mike Hazen. I reside in La Cuenyada, Flint Ridge, and like Sierra Madre, I can see there's a very committed population there to development. I also chair the Planning Commission in La Cuenyada, so I, first of all, would like to compliment the mayor, city council, and city manager for a great presentation that gives us the understanding. I think the low density that has been put on the MOU, as it was put out by the city manager, the city park, and limiting it at this point to forty-two units makes it a very thoughtful project that I think will, from a tax revenue standpoint, just the beauty of the community will add to the beauty of Sierra Madre. I submitted an email and in favor of it, and I'm making this phone call just to continue to support the, your voting positive on this MOU. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you for calling. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
David Gordon, Sierra Madre. I'm also a member of the Preserve Sierra Madre Steering Committee. And it's clear that the city is acting in a responsible and proper way over the, over the development, and I support the MOU, but I have one caveat. It's absolutely vital for local democracy that public meetings on such a big issue be held when the public can actually gather. But COVID-19 prevents the public workshops laid out in the MOU from taking place in public. If it goes ahead in June and July, then it's likely to be on Zoom with call-ins like this, which are better than nothing, but not at all satisfactory. In a letter to the paper, Mayor John Capocha says, "We have to go ahead regardless because other development applications are being processed," and quote, "We cannot discriminate against the Passionist's plan just because it is large and may be controversial." I think the reverse is the case. The city should delay any development, the Passionist or any other, that is large and controversial until such time as the public can give its input in a public gathering. So if you applied that criteria, it would not discriminate against the Passionist project. It would apply more broadly to any large and controversial scheme. In fact, the MOU itself does allow for delay. Clause seven says, "The parties further agree that the preceding timetable may require reasonable adjustment during the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic-related local emergency." So I would ask the council to go ahead with the MOU to make it quite clear that the public workshops cannot be held until such time as we can gather in public to discuss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Kim Fornin, and I submitted an email and hoping that you guys would approve of this measure and the MOU, and I just wanted to urge you tonight to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
My name is John Stanfill. My name is John Stanfill. And I am a resident of La Cuenyada, California, and I am a property rights advocate. I'm calling in favor of the MOU and have submitted an email so stating. This is not a recording, as contrasted to an earlier caller. I'm calling because I can imagine no fairer approach to an important issue in a beautiful community than that which is being considered by the mayor and the city council. You guys have done a great job on this, and I'm in favor of an approval. Thank you.
Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Law, and I've been involved with the board at Madre de la Rosa, as is my wife, Sarah, and we've both submitted emails in favor of the city entering into the MOU, and we ask that you vote in favor of the MOU. Thank you very much.
Good evening, caller. We are currently discussing the Madre de la Rosa MOU. Please provide your name and city of residence. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Faith Hoffman. I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into the MOU, and I ask you to vote in favor of that tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may proceed with your comment. Caller, you may proceed with your comment.
Good evening. My name is Michael Higgins, and I am a resident of Sierra Madre. In fact, I live at the monastery. I'd like to just affirm the work of the council and its concern about the disposition of the property here. And I certainly encourage the council to continue the MOU, to vote favorably for that, because that will allow us to begin to plan much more concretely about the project, and will give the public a chance to get in and talk and understand and hear about it, and make their contributions as well. So I just want to affirm the council and ask you to vote favorably on the MOU. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. If you are watching this meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may now proceed with your comment. Caller, you may proceed with your comment.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dr. Albert A. Santianus, and I am a resident of Rosemont, California. I submitted an email in favor of the city entering into an MOU that is being considered tonight. I would like to highlight a couple of important points about the MOU for the Retreat Center. In it, the Retreat Center has followed all the rules, giving the public an opportunity to have input into the project, and will continue to do so. Also, as you know, the public will have many opportunities to provide more informed comments when that information is available. I ask that you vote in favor of the MOU. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may now proceed with your comment. Caller, you may now proceed with your comment. Hello, caller.
Good evening. This is Andrew Thornton, and I live in Glendale, California. I would just like to, I would just like to say that I'm here in motion for the MOU, and I'm very proud, I'm not!
Hello, caller.
I apologize for the delay. I don't have good cell reception where I'm at. My name is Andrew Thornton. I'm calling on behalf of Sierra Madre, and I am in support of the MOU. I understand this is an emotional time for some individuals during this decision-making process, and I would just like the record to show the good that this sale will do for the individuals and the fathers, the passionate of Madre de la Rosa. So I vote in favor of this, and I implore everyone else to do so as well. Thank you very much. I hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and your city of residence. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You may now proceed with your comment.
Hello, this is John Huben, La Cuenyada, and I wish to thank the council for taking this call. I am asking you to vote yes on the MOU for the Madre de la Rosa property, and please keep our Sierra Madre beautiful for the next generation to come. I have grandchildren there, and I'm very familiar with the city. Voting yes on the MOU would certainly be the next right step to keep this community beautiful. Thank you for letting me talk. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, caller. Please provide your name and city of residence. If you are watching the meeting live, please-
My name is Heather Twaddle Venus. I grew up in Sierra Madre and now live in Arcadia. I am a longtime former resident of the city. My mom still lives there. My husband's family is still living in town. I worked for the city growing up, both at the Sierra Madre Pool and at the library, and now I'm very proud to say that I'm on the board at the Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center at the Top of Sunnyside. As I said in my email to you and in my comments last month, I urge you to support the MOU, as I think it gives us the perfect platform to work together, the city and Madre de la Rosa, to find a development plan that is compatible with the spirit and the lifestyle that is so precious in Sierra Madre, which is equally important to Madre de la Rosa, and builds on our longstanding neighborhood and spirit of hospitality. Thank you for your work on this already and for your careful consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Mayor, at this point, there are no more callers for public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I have a question. And is there, is there a representative from the Passionists here that can speak for the Passionists as part of the team that negotiated the MOU? Mr. City Manager, do you know if we have somebody?
Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone else online at the meeting at this time.
Okay. What, tell me, what, what is, what do we believe that the flexibility of the timeline means for the duration of the COVID-19? Does that mean that it is a possibility that the first workshop could be delayed?
The, Mayor, the June thirty deadline is to let us know when the meeting will be planned by, not to actually hold the meeting, though we initially planned late June or July. The reason we added the clause in about COVID-19 and a reasonable timeframe is no one really knows, right, when restrictions are going to be lifted, and if they are, how those will be lifted. So that's, that was the express reason for putting it in there, is we wanted to make sure we could have a town hall where people could participate.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, maybe we should have that discussion with the monastery folks and see what that means to them. And I'd also, let me ask another question, because I think it says in the MOU that the city is coordinating that first two workshops. Is that the case?
Mayor, that's, that's correct. For coordination purposes, we wanted to have that ability so we could record it and potentially broadcast it, so anyone who couldn't attend in person would still have the ability to see it either on Channel Three, or again, we could post it online, which is the reason that we requested to coordinate the meetings.
Yes, okay. So I think that's something we should think about. You know, in the couple of the emails I responded to, I mean, what I was more concerned with on the comments was the quality of the comment, not necessarily how it was delivered. And I think we heard that tonight, is that we had some quality comments, very meaningful from some of the folks. And, you know, so, but on the other hand, I mean, people feel very strongly about this, and I hate to really just get hung up on how we're doing these public hearings if that really is a problem for people. So I think we should talk about that with the monastery, is to find out what their plans are, how they're going to present this. I mean, you know, I just don't think it's appropriate to wait forever for the, you know, to the point where we can get together. But on the other hand, things may loosen up in the next month or two, where we can at least meet in groups of ten. And if that's the case, maybe there's a way to have different groups of ten, or provide the proper social distancing in the summer, and maybe have even an outdoor event. But I think what would also help is that perhaps when they have something to present, and there are plans, like perhaps for the, what they're proposing in a little more detail for the layout of the homes and the parks, maybe they could go through that extra expense of printing that up and handing it out and giving it to people in advance. And that might be a good idea anyway, because there may be people that really don't want to attend or can't attend and prefer to interact over the phone in a meeting such as this. So I don't want to close off completely the ability to do things electronically, as we're doing in this meeting too. That may work better for some people. Some people may have the preference to meet in person. So maybe it's a good thing if we find a way to accommodate and find a middle ground, perhaps, or even accommodate those that do not want to meet over an electronic medium like this, to show up and say something in person. So the other thing is somebody had mentioned that it was perhaps a good idea that we mail a notification to everybody in town as to what the proposed timeline is and what the procedures are here. I think that's a good idea, because, I mean, gosh, as much time and effort as we put into getting the word out, some people just don't get what's going on. And I really don't know. Everybody I ask is, I mean, how could we do things better? And I really don't hear any good ideas about how we could communicate better. But on this- But on this particular project, I think perhaps it's a good idea that something could be mailed out to everybody with the timeline about when meetings are going to take place and that will put it to bed and then I don't want to hear from anybody, why didn't somebody tell me? So, yeah, again, I think that's a good idea. Then we had another comment, I think Lynn Coleman was her name, that wanted to know how we discuss this. And, you know, I'm just going to say one thing about it right now, is that we comply fully with the Brown Act and how we do things. Negotiations are not necessarily a public thing, but I think it would be good to explain that in detail of the timeline and how these discussions took place. And, you know, I certainly can go into that and give it a shot right now, but I don't think that's necessary. If we can do that and publish that as part of the frequently asked questions or something, I think that'd be helpful to reassure the public that we are operating in good faith according to the law here. So those are just some of my comments right off hearing what we've heard from the folks here. And I did want to say too, is again, there was an objection to people from out of town talking and I just want to say that that is not inappropriate and the council could weigh those comments versus comments that come from people. But they certainly are clients, most of these folks are certainly clients or constituents of the monastery and that, yes, they do have a right to speak in any public hearing, just as you can do going to another city to talk about something that is important to you that's happening in another city. So with that, are there any other discussion, questions or comments from the council?
I do. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you personally for writing those two articles in the Mountain Views News, which I thought were extremely helpful in getting a lot of information out. And I think that I've heard from a lot of residents and folks in the area that read it that thought it was very helpful. So thank you for taking the time to do that and thank you for everyone who made comments. I will echo the mayor's point about trying to build in some sort of flexibility with the Madre de la Rosa folks for the workshops. I think the workshops would be well-served to be actually in person. You know, I think that doing a Zoom call for a workshop for a project like this, if that was the only option, again, we'd have to live with it, but hopefully we can work in within this timeline and maybe some flexibility so that we can push it out into August potentially for at least one of them, so that we can do it in person and do it safely and make sure that we have folks able to show up in person. So I'm fine with the MOU. I think it sets out a good process for the city and our residents to weigh in on the project. And I do think that for the public workshops that we are going to organize, I think it would be vital to have them in person if we can. And I think that that will probably require a little bit of flexibility, because I think early June probably is just too early to do it in person. So I think at least having one of them in person is important, but if we could have both of them, that'd be great. But other than that, I mean, I think we can work within the MOU on that, because the MOU does have very flexible language. So thank you again, and that's all I have.
I'll jump in there. Unless you want to go, Madam Mayor Burden? Okay. I pretty much echo the comments from the mayor and from my colleague, Councilmember Harabedian. I intend to vote for the MOU. I think it's a great framework to begin discussions about a new development in the city. I do think that this issue of the COVID-19 is a very valid concern for our public, because I know many people, having gone through many different public activities for the last six years on this council, people will take us up on this. They will show up to these meetings and good for them. That is democracy. So I am a little, I am open to the idea of flexibility. I think, honestly, I think when the mayor said, you know, things are likely to lighten up, I can't imagine that by the end of June or at least the end of July, we couldn't have at least one of these meetings, if we had to do it outside. We've done outside meetings in the past. And in that kind of an environment, you could set it up with appropriate social distancing and give a large number of people an opportunity to interact with one another and with us. So I really think that this is doable within the framework that's been laid out. And I do want to compliment the mayor for his work on this. I have to say, his communications to various groups on Facebook, responding to questions on Facebook, his articles in the Mountain Views News, how he's conducted himself here, I think is a testament to the larger goodwill of what we're doing here. I think everybody, and him using leading by example, wants something that works for our community and no one wants anything shoved down anyone's throat. That's just not the Sierra Madre way. And so I just want to compliment you, John, and I think, I'm very optimistic that something very positive is going to eventually develop from this process.
I'll be very brief in my remarks. I mean, I can echo a lot of things that my colleagues have already said. Mayor, thank you for your leadership in this. I've been beneficiary of being on a lot of emails together and so you've been taking the lead in making, in responding to a lot of the inquiries. But I also want to thank the staff. I know this has been really challenging, but you really have been able to embrace the process. I think the biggest comment or concern or thread that I see for those that were initially not in favor of the MOU and possibly still are not, is the transparency piece. And I believe there are a lot of folks that are just learning about the process now. The fact that we even had a conversation about this and it was an agenda item in our March 10 meeting and we allowed for more time for people to comment on it, I think a test to the fact that we really are trying very hard to be transparent about it and the fact that the city also put the transparency website, I think is very important. I've been directing a lot of folks to that website so they can see. The FAQs also, a little bit of the timeline as to how this process has been unfolding. So I definitely am in favor for it and like I think a lot of the public comment folks have said, is that this is really just the beginning of it. This does not mean we're voting in favor for the development, but it outlines the process, the timeline and procedurally what we need to abide by as we move forward. So again, I'm in favor for the MOU.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So at this time, is there anything else? Are we ready to make a motion on the MOU?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. Madam City Clerk, if you can call for the vote?
Yes, Mayor John Caposha?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Arismende?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian?
Yes.
The motion to approve Resolution 20-18 as presented was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item number two here. It's an authorization to request bids for Kirsten Court Construction Project. This is very exciting and I don't think this is going to be too controversial, I hope, but Mr. City Manager, if you can take it from here?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have a presentation from our Community Services Manager and then staff will be available to take questions.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City Council, how is everybody doing? We'll be showing you an update this evening on our Kirsten Court final design as well as the arts in public places. And so this evening, staff is recommending that the city council approve the final design of the Kirsten Court refresh and authorize the city to begin seeking bids for the project construction. So currently, you'll see that Kirsten Court Plant still does include what we initially began with. We have the ADA improvements. We do have the raised platform, including the raised crosswalks, the pedestrian-friendly area, business-friendly area, gathering space as well. We're addressing the electrical and the lighting upgrades. And then what you'll see shortly as well is our proposed material and the color settings that are being recommended, as well as with some asphalt stamping designs. Next slide, thank you, James. So there's just some ideas that we had brought back after our last meeting with the Community Services Commission this past November. And our landscape architect brought back some examples as well. You see the asphalt paving here on both of these pictures and that's kind of like a nutmeg coloring with a different color trimming on the edges. Next slide. And then you see another example here of crosswalks. The one to your left, you'll notice is a raised crosswalk area, which is what we're looking to implement on the northern entrance and southern exit into that parking lot at Kirsten Court. And then there's different stamping designs as well that have been discussed. So if you go on to the next slide, and hopefully the colors, you can see distinctly, they're obviously a little different than when we get them on our computer or when we print them out, but this first one here is actually what is referred to as a driftwood color in an ashlar stamped pattern that you see in the field of the parking lot there. And then the trimming around it is more of the nutmeg banding pattern. And again, as I mentioned, the northern and southern, the entrance and the exit there, it's almost like a coffee ground dark color and that's where the raised crosswalks would be. And then the next slide shows a slightly different color. It's a darker, it's actually darker color. The commission refrained from the lighter color, the field as well, that the darker color would help cover up any type of stains and what have you. So this is a nutmeg in the field of the actual parking lot and it's reversed. So here, the outer trimming is actually the driftwood color on the banding. But again, the crosswalk area is still that darker coffee ground color that would be raised and that's also in brick. And so the next slide then now takes us into the arts component of our project. As you know, we have the Arts in Public Places funding as well. So the recommendations that were also carried forward from our commission, that we have historic tributes designed onto inlaid brass plaques preferably, and these would have engraved artwork along with a brief description. And these would be in different areas along Kirsten Court, but they would cover essentially the school bell tower, the schoolhouse history, also some history on the city's red trolley. And then potentially, if we do the fourth one, it'd be some movie and filming history about Sierra Madre. So on the next slide, you'll see some other ideas that we kind of brainstormed. Just to give you an idea, to the left there, that's a picture out in San Francisco and it's Jerry Garcia from The Grateful Dead and that was a brass plaque. So it has his picture, it has some wording there, historical background on him. And then the one to the right is Jane Adams and she was an activist and social reformer from the late 1800s to the early 1930s. And so just kind of gives you an idea of what the plaque might look like around our area there at Kirsten Court. The next slide also shows a little bit more sophisticated pattern. This is actually in Nashville, the Music City Walk of Fame. Of course, we would not be doing as many plaques as you see pictured here, but just to kind of give you a broader scope and idea of what that looks like there. And then the next slide, actually, just this afternoon, we were able to get some pictures here and we've been working with Debbie Henderson from our Sierra Madre Library. So this was one example that she was able to pull up for the first red car trolley. And again, it shows a picture, shows some historical information there, dates and what have you. And so that would be one idea, something that could be placed there along the area within Kirsten Court. And these plaques we're looking at being 36 by 36 inches. So may appear really large, but you'll see in a moment too, in perspective to the area around it, they're actually not that large, but it'll cover enough information. So the next one is actually our Mount Wilson Trail Race and that was another great photo. We've used it on our posters as well for Mount Wilson Trail Race. And this shows a little, again, description there, history on Mount Wilson Trail Race and that photo, historical photo. So that's just a couple of ideas that we were able to collect from our library as we continue working with them. So if we go on to the next slide, then you'll start to see some of the potential locations. We just kind of went out with Public Works, Chris Amino, as well as James Carlson, and we just kind of did a brief walkthrough and these were just poster boards that we laid out around the area there. This is kind of where we would assume the potential raised platform area. Then it's the next area that's slightly east of the bell tower, poster board there on the floor where another plaque might potentially be placed. And then we have another location that could likely be under the existing bell tower. And then last, we have the sidewalk area there that's adjacent to the existing parking stalls that's slightly west of the bell tower. And so obviously, we bring this to you for discussion this evening. Our staff recommendation is that city council approve the final design of the Kirsten Court refresh, authorizing the city to seek bids for the project construction. With that as an alternative, as well as, you know, the city council may also wish to make changes to the design concept that you just saw. And that includes anything from the color to the inclusion of the plaques or even the plaque locations or any of the other design elements. And then the city council may also decide to wait for the Community Services Commission before making the recommendation on the final design prior to discussion. So again, at this point, we have maintained as well the core goals and the guiding principles that were all supportive of the city's Kirsten Court mission and the view for this project from the inception and while still maintaining that community-centered approach. So we are addressing, you know, environmental sustainability. We are addressing pedestrian and business-friendly atmospheres for individuals that visit there as well. And, you know, lastly, as far as our funding sources, we are still covering this through our grant that was awarded through the County Regional Parks and Open Space District. We have been obviously working with our landscape architect. So we do have 235,000 that is being allocated through that grant. We also have an additional 20,000 through our downtown lighting district. We have about 190,000 from our park impact fees and in the Arts in Public Places alone, it's just over 60,000. So that concludes our presentation and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Silva Baron. It's wonderful. It's really exciting to see this finally come together. So what questions do we have from the council? Oh, but before I do that, I forgot, I'm supposed to remind the public that now would be the time to call in so we can get you all in queue, because we're going to open it up for public comment in just a couple of minutes.
Mayor, I have a quick question of Ms. Silva.
Yes.
I see the breakdown of the revenue sources and I see park impact fees of 190,000 and Arts in Public Places 60,000. Do you happen to know what the balance is in those separate accounts? Does that clean us out or do we have anything left to work with after we're done with it?
Those are the current balances that we verified. I know the Arts in Public Places is at that amount currently, because we haven't tapped into that. Again, in consideration of having already worked with the architect, we have that balance remaining from the regional parks. And then reviewed the other items with our public... And then reviewed the other items with our Public Works Director confirming that we have the twenty thousand and then the one hundred and ninety thousand as well. So that's a total of five hundred and five thousand. And should be able to cover us for the current total project, the probable project costs, construction costs we're looking at is four hundred and, four hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Right. And so the, the arts and public places was one I'm more concerned about. That, that is the sum total in that account, right? That's going to be completely depleted. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca, I just have one question. It's John Harbidian. Is the plaque, who's going to make the final call on the plaques? And is it going to come back to council or is it just going to be made by, by staff? I, I, I think the plaques are a great idea. I just, I'd be curious to what the final decision is on, on what we put on there.
Well, I think depending on the remainder of the information that we are able to gather and working with the library, we would definitely like to bring it back to commission at a later point. And then definitely back to council. Obviously, you know, because of the current pandemic, we have not been having commission meetings other than discuss, discussing any essential items. But in regards to this item, I do foresee us taking this component back to the CSC and then again, bringing it back to your board as well.
Thanks.
So, okay. Yeah. Mayor Protem, do you have any questions?
I, I didn't, but I will have a quick one. Thank you, manager, for sharing that presentation. I know this has been a long awaited presentation. But with respect to the funding, I, I know I've asked this before, none of them, none of those funding sources require, have a time limit or requires to expend the dollar amount within a certain period of time, correct?
Um, that is correct. As far as, well, I can verify for the regional parks grant, we had already proceeded to do an extension with our county project officers. So we're actually right now on track. Considering that we are able to move forward this evening, we would be actually on track with our timeline for the project. So that would leave us, you know, proceeding with Public Works going out to the bidding process in the next couple of months. And then finalizing everything to go start with official award for the construction project in late June and then carry us out through the end of the year. So we technically have a perform, the project performance end date is through April of twenty twenty-one. So we are on target right now. I'm not sure if city manager can verify or confirm that if there are dates that are held to the lighting district or the park impact fees.
Now, the, as long as council reauthorizes the funding within the fiscal year, assuming it goes that far, then there would be no deadline. We would just need another reauthorization if, if we exceeded the fiscal year.
Thank you.
I just have one question. How does the, the plaque fit into the timeline? Do we have a deadline to get that wrapped up as far as what those plaques are going to be? So they can be installed with the actual construction or is this something that is going to be done later after the main construction is done?
Chris, are you there? If you can respond to that, I want to say we were going to be doing it, working on the plaque simultaneously, but depending on, on the construction movement, we would like to streamline that into the project at some point, which is why we're bringing it to, to you now for, for you to have an understanding and get a visual of what that would look like.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, the plaques can be decided within the thirty days of the award of the contract. But the contractor would like, we would like to get those in the process while the contractor is starting the work so that they can place them with the wet concrete.
Yeah. Okay, good. So we, Ms. Silva, we really need to get the CSC back in action on this. So are they willing to meet on a Zoom meeting like this?
I believe so. We can make that, we can definitely coordinate that.
Okay. Well, just thank them for us because as I said, this is just really exciting. We've been waiting and all good things are worth waiting for and this looks pretty good. I'm really happy about it and happy that we're finally getting to the point where we can go ahead and award the contract. So I have no other questions.
As are we.
Mayor, we do have at least one caller in queue right now for public comment.
Okay, let's put them on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, caller. Thank you for calling. We are currently taking comment on item number two. Please provide your name and city of residence. If you are watching the meeting live, please mute your TV or your feed to avoid feedback. You may now proceed with your comment.
David Gordon, Sierra Madre. This is so much of an improvement on the preceding plans. It's much simpler. It's uncluttered. It hasn't got extraneous elements in it. The idea of having the plaques is a really, really good one. What I'm not clear about is whether the plaques constitute the public art. I hope so. As a former art museum director, I have to say that nearly all public art commissioned by municipalities is completely dreadful. And so I hope that we're not going to have one of those strange bits of sculpture which is called modern art. I love modern art, but most public art isn't. The second thing is that I see that the pavers between the road, between the sidewalk and Kirsten Court are going to be put in. And I think that's a really good thing because it'll give more of a pedestrianized feel to that area. I do hope, and it's not clear from the drawing, that the curb between the sidewalk and the new paving is removed so that it's on the same level as the sidewalk. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, caller. Mr. Mayor, at this time, there are no more callers for discussion on this item.
That's a great comments and a good question. So yes, that is the public arts funds is used for those plaques, correct? Yes. Okay.
Yes.
How about this question about the curb? Is it level with the street or there's got to be a curb there for the parking, right?
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to answer that? I can, we're, we're going to have a curb on the south side of the street. However, down by where the handicap parking is going to be, we're going to be leveling off the parking there. That will be on the southwest part of Kirsten Court, of the street portion of Kirsten Court. That will be more level with the, the sidewalk there for ADA access.
Yeah, I see. But just another quick question. Why is the, the handicap parking moved to the south side? It's on the north side right now, isn't it?
Well, with the, with the civil engineer discovered there is to, we, we have to level off the handicap parking. It can't be more than a two percent grade. So they found it easier to have van accessible ADA parking and regular ADA parking there on the south end. It can change to the north end, more by the Starbucks side. But we would have a leveling transition there between parking spaces, similar to what you're seeing now in, in grocery store parking lots and that sort of thing. So we're trying to find a, the most level spot to put it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Director Sabino. Okay, any, looks good to me. Any other comments?
So I just would like clarification. Is there a preference, just so that we know moving forward, the lighter of the colors, the darker of the color? The nutmeg is a darker color, reddish, kind of a terracotta on the parking lot, asphalt there versus the lighter color.
This is Mayor Protem Rosemendi. I really didn't want to comment on the color. But I will say, when you gave the, the samples, it, it makes, gives it a different feel than what we're seeing. And the, the, even the, the PDF form. So I'm not so concerned about it anymore. But, you know, I, I do understand as we're going through the process, if we do, you know, change it right before or, or after the bidding process, that's a possibility. But I also understand the reason we're looking for a darker color is when you're considering car oil stains and tire marks. So I, I can appreciate as to why the darker color and thank you for showing examples of that in real cities and, or I shouldn't say real cities, in other cities and, and, and so that we can actually see it. It was just really hard to see in the PDFs. Looked all so brown.
Understood. Thank you.
Mayor, we can have the Community Services Commission reaffirm or reconsider the decision on color while they finalize the plaque decision as well. And then that wouldn't hold anything up.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I think that's, I'd rather leave it in that decision in their hands than my, I have no artistic I'm sure to get it wrong. So. All right. Well, okay. We've had public comment. Do we have a motion?
I, I would love to make the first motion considering that we worked on this on the Community Services Commission when I was there. So I, I would like to make that first motion.
I, I would like to make a quick comment and then I'll second it. Yeah, I agree. I, I always on, on the Community Services Commission with you, Michelle, but I could, we've been hemming and hawing over this ever since you and I have been on this council. I know that. And good, I mean, it's wonderful that, that we finally put something together. Kudos to every soul, every living soul that had a hand in this, which I know there are a lot of people on the current Community Services Commission and past Community Services Commissions and volunteers, city staff. I, I really think we're going to have a nicer downtown when this is all done. And it's just been done by the people of Sierra Madre. So, so kudos to everyone and I, and I hereby second your motion.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, can you call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor John Caposha.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Erzende.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Aye.
Councilmember John Harbidian.
Aye.
The motion to approve the final design of the Kirsten Court Construction Project and authorize staff to seek bids for construction was passed by unanimous vote. Thank you.
Hey, very good. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number three and that's the consideration of award, of award of contract for the construction of a solar system in our city yard there. So again, I'll just ask people if you're, if you're, want to comment on that, now would be the time to call in.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have Management Analyst James Carlson give a presentation, then we'll be available for questions.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Discussion item three on the agenda tonight is a consideration of an award of a power purchase contract to Rex Solar Incorporated for design and construction of a solar photovoltaic system at the city yards. The value is not to exceed one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. However, the agreement is structured to eliminate any startup expenses to the city. City council reviewed the development of this project concept at their January twenty-eighth and February twenty-fifth meetings. Staff is now ready to recommend that council approve upon successful completion of SEQA analysis and a conditional use permit, a power purchase agreement with Rex Solar for the design and construction of solar photovoltaic system, including now a power storage component at the city yards. This system will use the energy of the sun to distribute water to our residents as well as saving energy costs associated with such water distribution. Staff is pleased to report, as demonstrated in the table on page four of your staff report, that the initial cost savings have increased with the inclusion of more recent energy usage data. It is now estimated that there will be an approximate forty-one thousand dollars in savings the first year, up about fifty-five percent from the initial estimates and with savings increasing each following year. Staff is also recommending that exhibit I be included with the agreement, which includes a storage option to the project. This would add a very small amount of savings, around five percent. It would also give our water department more control on how and when to use the clean energy, how it's used, and it could be used for backup power in an emergency. I do want to be clear, it would need some additional engineering and equipment to perform this function as we would want it to. Should the city council approve the agreement this evening, staff will begin work with Rex Solar to finalize design components in preparation for the SEQA and CUP process. This will be undertaken with mitigating disruption to residents that may be affected by the project and another round of public review, review will take place at the planning commission level. And with that said, staff is recommending that the city council approve upon successful completion of SEQA analysis and conditional use permit, a power purchase agreement contract to Rex Solar Incorporated for design and construction of a five hundred and fifty-four kilowatt solar photovoltaic system, including a power storage component at the city yards at a value not to exceed one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, again, without any expense to the city and direct staff to enter into a power purchase agreement with the firm for twenty years. Rex Solar's project manager, Preston, I'm sorry, Preston McGill is on the Zoom meeting this evening and he and I can address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, what questions do we have from the council?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I, I saw in some, some of the form letters that were sent to us, there was some concern about reflection on, from the top of these photovoltaic cells upwards towards the hillsides part of our community. I, I don't recall hearing that in our previous presentations. I just wanted to get confirmation that that's not the case.
Councilmember Goss.
Yeah, thank.
The design will be finalized and then the SEQA process will start. If there's any impact to residents, they'll be required to be mitigated. When we went through SEQA for the previous design, even though it was the same location, just not all in the same spot, we were able to mitigate those concerns. Now let Management Analyst Carlson address that further.
Yes, Councilmember Goss. And, and in addition to that, all the designs we've been talking about have these solar panels facing to the south. So anything from the mountain is most likely, and this is dependent on our formal design work, going to be just looking at the top edge of these panels. But as City Manager Engle and mentioned, I went back to the previous initial study that we did in the twenty seventeen for actually the first project design when we were coming up with this idea. And in section two point one, it's called aesthetics. And section D specifically asks, will it create a new source of substantial light or glare which would adversely affect day or nighttime views in the area? And that's one of four different similar questions to be addressed in the SEQA process.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, either for James or Preston. But in the price exclusions, I noticed that the utility connection for the storage is anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars. That's not included in the, in the price. And I was just, just wondering why that wasn't included and, and if we are, I assume that's an option that we're going to, to take. So does that mean that we'd have to pay a ten thousand dollars for it?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Preston.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so that was not included in the initial PPA offering. And that's just because of the timeline of things that it takes to get things in motion once we say something. So I, I did reflect on that being included i- in the final version and the impact of that is one tenth of a cent. So it's a very minimal inclusion. It, it, it is. It is to some extent not tax credit eligible, so it may be more beneficial for the city to just pay outright for that and avoid that being tacked on to the kilowatt hour charge. That was an option. The other option was to include the microgrid controls, which are not standard here. This would just be a battery deployment that helps reduce costs. The microgrid controls are customized based on what exact equipment you have there. And with everything that's been going on, it hasn't been very easy to get the technical information, but that doesn't mean that we can't include those. A caveat to interconnection costs that you asked, Parabedian, would be that those controls are not tax credit eligible and would negatively impact your PPA rate over time. So if we want microgrid controls, it may be more beneficial for the city to also purchase those controls. So I left those out, but they can be included and it can or not be a cost depending on what the final verdict of what the council wants to do. Since the storage was kind of added in between our last couple of meetings, I haven't had a lot of time to get feedback and make adjustments, but that's where it stands.
Okay. I mean, would you, would you recommend having storage and not having those things? Both the, and the micro controls?
Well, you have to file for the interconnection. So the difference is if you just did the standard solar without a battery, it's seventy-five dollars. If you have a battery, regardless of size, you have to have special meters and other pieces of equipment installed and that's where the range comes in. And that's, that was a range that I can't put a finger on until we go to the utility and say, we want to do this and then they give us a cost. But that's an appropriate cost range to estimate. Majority of customers don't add microgrid controls. They usually just add storage with the solar because the cost savings are there. It is something that can be added later with savings. It doesn't have to be in a runaway. It depends on what the city's final direction is.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful.
Mayor Protem, any questions?
Sorry, no, none at this time. Thank you.
Okay, can you please explain the benefit of the microgrid control? I'm not clear on what that is.
Okay, so a microgrid controller is, in this case, we'll say it's made by Schneider. This is a company that we use controls from. What this control does, it understands what the battery is doing, what the battery charge level is, what the solar is doing, what your current energy need is. It also can be connected to things like generators and have sophisticated, if so desired, controls like James mentioned to direct when renewable energy is deployed, when it's saved. Typically without a microgrid controller, a battery is, I wouldn't call it a dumb battery, but it's very basic. It has a couple of programming options, which are demand shaving, which is what is a battery's function to reduce costs during peak times. It also has like a resiliency option where it can just be on reserve and never used. And then you can do a hybrid of those functions, but a standard storage option just kind of has those two, two functions, cost savings and backup. A microgrid controller allows you to integrate your PV with the battery and isolate from the grid in the event of an outage and also do, depending on what your utility allows you to do, what your usage is, a lot of different exporting of credits and things that you couldn't get with a normal system. So you could, you could push the battery to do certain things, right? And then have a reserve backup in case the grid goes down. That's not something that's done with a battery. So a controller allows you to have far more oversight into what the PV is doing with the battery with your usage.
Okay, so the control, now in this case with the controller then, we could enter into an agreement with Clean Power Alliance to use that capacity during times of peak load? Is that, we need that to do that?
I, I think that that is a possibility. I'm not very well versed with Clean Powers programs. But in the event of that happening, we would need to be cautious because a storage PPA usually gives credits and things to the purchaser. So you would need to make sure that it's not like deemed as a credit or something else in that event that would go to the owner of the asset. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, Mr. Carlson, I'm just unclear as to whether that included in the recommendation that we're being asked to approve? Include that controller?
Yeah, and it's, as Preston mentioned, there's not as much analysis into the addition of the battery. However, with the preliminary analysis we've done, we would add that component that we could build off of in the, in the near future and we would still be saving money and actually about five percent more by having the basic battery on there. Knowing that Clean Power Alliance is, is really, has been really busy with returning public funds and trying to find projects that would be suitable, knowing they were interested in what we were doing, I was initially inclined to maybe wait for their program. But after seeing the little bit of savings and the buildable or expandable options for this battery, I made that my recommendation.
But you include the battery, but this is, I'm still just not clear on that. The battery is one thing, but I thought that this controller, the microgrid controller is another option. Is that not the case?
Mayor, the.
Not, not at what you're looking at now.
Whoa, okay. So we're just being asked to approve the battery at this time, right?
With its associated little bit of savings and expand a bit of expandability.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
I want to, I want to mention something. If you do choose to include microgrid controls in the PPA rate, you would be looking at eight tenths of a cent increase per KWH. So it's not, you know, it's not massive. Your, your rate would be ten cents. So you're looking at a seven to nine percent increase in the total PPA rate to add a microgrid controller. And again, you still have enough savings for that to be justified. It's just that your upfront savings instead of forty-five thousand would be, say, thirty-six. But then you would have the microgrid controller. It's just that we haven't got far enough determining the exact type of controls that would be needed.
Okay, so again, the idea is that we, that we're being asked today to just improve the solar with the storage and the microgrid controller is an option that we could add in the future.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Okay, so if there's no more questions, we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have anybody that is, wants to comment?
Mayor, currently we have no one in queue for public comment.
Okay, great. We'll just bring it back to the council. Okay, just what discussion do we want?
I'll just make a quick comment. I'm glad to see we're able to add the storage since our last discussion on this and we are still continuing to have no expenses to the city, so I look forward to approving this.
I'll just add to that, and I think we're taking something like seven hundred and fifty tons of carbon out of the atmosphere in the future, so that's a good thing as well. So it's all good. I support it.
Yeah, I support it. I want to thank again Robert Parkhurst and Matt Schneider for all their help and James Carlson did, you know, years of work on this. And so really hats off to him and Gabe for getting this across the finish line with Preston and Duke Energy's help. So I'm excited about this. I'm glad we're doing it.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilmember Harabedian, because this was your brainchild to bring it back up again after we declined to go with the last proposal that was in front of us. So this is really great. I'm excited about it. And again, I just want to also acknowledge that the concern about the adverse, possible adverse impact on the hill will be taken care of with the CEQA process and if there is an adverse impact, it will be mitigated. So with that, shall we call for a vote?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, great.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, can you call for the vote?
Sorry, operator error on the mute. Sorry. Mayor John Caposha?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Arzende?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian?
Yes.
The motion to direct staff to award a power purchase agreement contract to Rex Solar Inc. for the design and construction of a five hundred and fifty-four kilowatt solar photovoltaic system, including a power storage component at city yards at a value not to exceed one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars without any expense to the city and direct staff to enter into a power purchase agreement with the firm for twenty years was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. This is very exciting and I'm very proud that we've included this and we'll get it going. Okay, so let's move on to the final item on our agenda, which is consideration of resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding with our Professional Firefighters Association.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to have our human resources manager give a presentation and then staff is available for questions. We also have the president of our Professional Firefighters Union, Brett Bartlett, on the call as well, if you have any questions for him.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you this evening, as the consideration of resolution twenty nineteen approving the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association memorandum of understanding and resolution twenty twenty amending the classification plan and salary matrix, updating the fire captain salary range. As noted in the staff report, full-time fire personnel have been governed by the terms and conditions of employment since two thousand and fourteen. Over the last several months, the city's negotiating team has held several meetings with respective, with the respective fire union negotiating new terms and conditions that include the following items. A five-year contract, if adopted, would go into effect July one, twenty twenty and scheduled to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Excluding fire captains' salary increases for all other fire department positions to include in the first year, a twenty percent salary increase. In the third year, a twelve and a, twelve and a half percent increase and in the fifth year, five and a half percent increase. As you can see on the slide, that is a first step increase from fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents to twenty-three dollars and thirteen cents in five years. Also, in the salary ranges in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which is year two, and fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which is a year four, to include eliminating step one from the salary ranges, shifting all other steps down. This change also excludes the fire captain's salary range. Other benefits include additional assignments and pay incentives, a one-time qualified engineer exam bonus, longevity pay and adjustments to the sick and vacation leave accruals, aligning them more with a twenty-four-hour work schedule. Moreover, the city staff is recommending that city council approve the modification of the city's classification plan and salary matrix for the fire captain position, changing the current range from ten steps to five steps. This change would bring consistency with all other bargaining groups' salary ranges. I'd also like to add amendments to the attached MOU to include updating the language in Article Ten Uniform Allowance and Article Sixteen, Section Four, additional assignments and pay. For Article Ten Uniform Allowance, the updated language makes it clear that only, that it only applies to classic members as uniform allowance is not pensionable for new member employees under PAPRA. For Article Sixteen, Section Four, additional assignments and pay, the, the new language includes the frequency of the stipend to be paid monthly. The proposed MOU is expected to increase the budget by an estimated two hundred and thirty thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and additional estimated increases for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-five. Staff is seeking a council adopt resolution twenty nineteen approving the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association memorandum of understanding and resolution twenty twenty amending the classification plan and salary matrix, updating the fire captain's salary range. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez. What questions do we have from the council?
I don't have any questions.
No questions?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. So oh, darn it, I forgot again that I was supposed to remind the public to call in. Do we have anybody that has called in?
Not right now, Mayor. No one has called into queue.
Okay, all right. Well, let's bring it back to council for discussion then. And Miguel, can you please put that slide back up that shows the salaries there? Or that's Mr. Carlson that is in control of that. Okay. So I'm going to just start by making a comment about this. It might sound irresponsible that we are giving a generous raise to our firefighters. But I want, if anybody's watching from the public there, look at the current hourly rate of a firefighter paramedic, fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents, that's barely above minimum wage. And this is to me what Sierra Madre is all about and we're, you know, we're offering this to our firefighters as a matter of fairness, that we expect them to be professional in their duty and we also want them to have the respect of their peers out there in the city. So the raise, the proposal that was put together for them had this in mind to get them in comparison to similar cities like San Gabriel and South Pasadena that are other single-station fire departments. So even in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, when they're up to twenty-three dollars an hour, that gets them in the ballpark of similar cities, but it's still quite a bit below Pasadena and Arcadia. So I just want to emphasize that this really is a matter of fairness and what this represents from our point of view, or at least I'm speaking for myself, but hopefully for the council, is that we want to be absolutely fair to our firefighters. We appreciate what they do and we want them to feel good about the position they have here in Sierra Madre. And we hope this provides, you know, somewhat of an incentive to stay with us because we know that some will always move on to higher paying jobs elsewhere in Southern California. So I just, I just want to make that comment and I thank our city manager, Mr. Englund, for, you know, discussing this with us and recognizing the wisdom in treating our firefighters fairly.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the union was, did a great job negotiating and those were the points that we brought up that you just said as we talked about having overlapping interests and that both sides were looking for the same thing. And that was to make sure our professional firefighters were paid like professionals. Real quick on that, that last slide, I was doing math at home, which I always do when the numbers come up. The initial increase should be to eighteen seventy-three an hour. The secondary increase would be twenty-one oh seven an hour and the final increase would be a little bit above twenty-four dollars an hour. So everything you said was correct. It looks like we just had a little bit of fuzzy math, as they say on that slide.
Okay. Any other comments?
If I may, Mayor, I'll comment also. It's, it's actually piggybacking on what you said in terms of the salary. You know, I think it's loud and clear from our residents that we want to maintain and keep our own fire department and we worked really hard to get to this point. We know how important it is for our frontline fire department to be there and especially during this time of the pandemic, it's, it's really apparent how important their, their roles are. But you know, when you're looking at the salaries, I know it seems, it could seem very aggressive, especially when we're looking at a five-year plan. You know, I appreciate the foresight of our city manager and our staff to really think that far ahead of it. But we've made so many great strides to get towards mutual aid. We've done so much in terms of our training. This really is an investment that we need to continue investing in. We're still, I believe, is the lowest paid in, in comparison to all the other Verdugo cities. We're twenty percent even with this. Below are the average. So you know, this is working towards where we should be going. Again, it seems aggressive in a five-year plan, but it's at the least that we can do to continue the momentum we've been able to do over the last year or two.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll just, not to repeat anything, I do think that the the percentages might catch people off guard. But then when you look at the actual numbers and you realize how little we're paying our firefighters and our paramedics and our engineers, I think it's it's it really speaks for itself. And I think the mayor and Mayor Protem both said it said it well, that I think this is due and appropriate even even at a time like this, but maybe even more so at a time like this when our frontline firefighters and paramedics are really fighting a war each day and are in harm's way. So I think that this is the right thing that the city's doing here. And I'm glad that the bargaining unit and the city could could come to to a good agreement for both parties.
Hey, councilmember Goss.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think that every, I agree with everything's being said here. Fairness is important. And obviously, we need to, my biggest concern is that we develop a structure that retains and allows us to recruit quality people because we want quality people answering those paramedic calls and getting to those fires and car accidents and all the other things that our department does, and they do well. So to me, it's pretty much a no-brainer. But I also know people here in town who are out of work. I know people in town who are about ready to lose their small businesses. And they spent all their available cash to stay in business, and they're about done. And so I, the only reason I can support this today is because I really feel like we are in a period of time, just as councilmember Harabedian said, we need to have good quality paramedics and firefighters out there right now as we speak. And we need them to be motivated properly. We need to be able to retain them. And we're moving into the summer months, and we had a lot of rain. And it's likely there's going to be a lot of brush up there. Maybe we're looking at another bad fire season, God forbid. And so I don't want to mess with that. I think everything that the city manager and our staff has done to negotiate in good faith, I'm willing to support. I just want the public to know that I really feel like this is, to me, more about public safety for them, the public, even given the fact that some of them are not going to be getting raises like we're giving here.
Okay, well said. Okay, with that, are we ready for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Great, okay. Madam City Clerk, can you call for a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor John Caposha?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Arzende?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian?
Aye.
The motion to approve resolution 20-19 as presented and approve resolution 2020 as presented was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, great. And our firefighters really appreciate what they're doing. Okay, so is there anything else or any future agenda items that anybody would like to suggest?
You know, I would like to break, could I bring a touchy subject up? I saw some conversation between the city manager and one of our small business owners this week by way of email. And I know there are a lot of small business owners out there in our neck of the woods, maybe not as many in Sierra Madre. But, and I know that we're handcuffed by county and statewide policy, but I think maybe we should be having a conversation at the city council level about what we might be able to do for small business in this city in terms of something something farther than what we've done now. So, yeah, I'd like to add that to your future agenda if we could.
Okay. Okay, well, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. But before I do, I mean, councilmember Goss, that's just a really important point. And I would just like to ask everybody out there that is in a position to do so, please order takeout from our restaurants. I'll tell you that we're doing it three to four times a week.
Ditto.
Let's let's just, everybody, just pitch in and give these folks some business and just help them to survive. We don't want to see one of our businesses go out of business here. So I fully support your recommendation to have the discussion. But in the meantime, let's all of us do whatever we can to keep them in business. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
If to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, this one, we won't do a full count on it. I think we're losing unanimous. So, thank you, everybody. And city manager Englund, I just want to compliment your staff on how well this particular meeting went. I'm getting very comfortable with it, and I thought your folks just handled this and just nailed it execution-wise on how to conduct a remote meeting. So thanks to everybody who helped out here. It's quite a team effort. So with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.